Tonight, on the fifteenth of October, I'd like to read the revised School Committee Agenda for the evening. We have visitors or citizens input, approval of minutes, teaching and learning highlight, our Ahern Middle School web leaders, where everybody belongs. Mrs. Abrams, Ms. Frazier, Ms. Bailey, and middle school web leaders. Welcome. We move on to the 2018 Culture and Climate Survey Results, Dr. Verdos and Dr. Mello. International OECD, which is the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development, test for schools. We have wonderful results, or Dr. Verdos has wonderful results.
And Dr. Mello on that one, too.
And Dr. Mello, okay. Second reading of the Policy EFD Student Food Services Accounts. Our October one enrollment update. Acceptance of donations, Taylor Elementary PTO and Foxborough Kickers Club. Then we move to Bi-County Collaborative, BIKO Quarterly Report. Dr. Verdos. Update on Borough Project. We need to vote to confirm building, the school building committee members, and vote to accept the MSBA project scope and budget agreement. Mr. Youkner. Other matters, and then adjournment. Do we have any unscheduled visitors or people who want to do citizens input? All right, we will move on to minutes. And we have a policy subcommittee meeting from July seventeen, twenty eighteen. Are there any additions or corrections?
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from the policy subcommittee meeting of July seventeenth, two thousand eighteen.
I'll second that. All in favor? The policy subcommittee meeting of August twenty nine, twenty eighteen.
If there are no changes, I will make a motion that we accept the minutes of the policy subcommittee from August twenty ninth, two thousand eighteen.
A second? You all second that? Thank you. Any vote? Thank you. Accepted as presented. And now for our regular September seventeen, twenty eighteen. Regular meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from regular town meeting, regular minutes from September seventeenth, two thousand eighteen.
I'll second the motion. All in favor? Thank you. And now, teaching and learning highlight. Would you like to introduce our guests, please?
I would love to introduce our guest. So we have our web leaders, our eighth graders from the Ahern Middle School. I'm going to ask you to bring your chairs right up to the guest table. And as mentioned earlier, we have Mrs. Abrams, the principal, Ms. Frazier, the assistant principal, and Ms. Bailey, one of our guidance counselors at the Ahern. And they were our two fabulous leaders of the web leaders. They actually went to training in Connecticut in the middle of a snowstorm for three days in order to learn about Project Boomerang and specifically the web program to where they came back. And you were trained, and then you led all of our new incoming fifth graders. So we are super excited to have you here to tell us about your experience in being a web leader and then what it was like for the orientation for our fifth graders and then what you're doing now. But we'll have you first go around, and Georgia, we can start with you and say who you are. How about that?
Okay. Hi, my name's George Tenza. I obviously am a web leader, and I like to sing and dance.
What grade?
Oh, I'm eighth grade.
Thank you.
All of us are in eighth grade.
Okay.
I'm Gianna Kuscha. I am as well, obviously, a web leader. I'm in eighth grade as well, and I love to sing and act.
My name is Dylan Repoli, and I'm also in eighth grade and a web leader, and I love to play lacrosse.
My name is Mark Wachini, and I'm also in eighth grade. I'm a web leader, and I love to play soccer and ski.
My name is Alex Penders. I am in eighth grade, and I am also a web leader. I enjoy basketball and soccer.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
So I don't know, Ms. Frazier, Ms. Bailey, if you want to give a little bit of background about your experience as far as going for the training initially?
It was fun.
So the training itself, we went last March, as Dr. Verdos said, in Connecticut, and it was three very intense days. So basically, they simulated what orientation would be like with the adults so that we could go through it and experience what it would be like for the students. And then they walked us through step by step of how to run the orientation ourselves and then what the follow-up pieces would be like. So, you know, you've seen some snippets, some pictures and videos at an earlier meeting. So we're excited for you to hear from our eighth grade web leaders about what their experience has been, what they've gained from it, and what they think the fifth graders have gained from the experience as well.
So who wants to start?
I guess I'll start. So what I've learned from the experience of being an eighth grade web leader is that it's difficult to be a leader, but it's very fun. And I feel great joy from teaching others how to respect each other and how to learn, how to be a great student as a fifth grader and to not have them nervous in coming to fifth grade.
Yep. I definitely experienced, like, how to make the fifth graders feel more welcomed because when I was in fifth grade, all I was was nervous. So I definitely wanted to make sure that the fifth graders wouldn't experience the same thing I did, and I wanted them to remember them walking in on the first day of school to fifth grade at the Ahern Middle School.
Something that I really love about the experience of web leaders is that after the experience of Orientation Day and being able to make connections with the fifth graders, I feel like I have more awareness in my grade myself. Like, I might notice something that's going on better and step in and help more than I would if I didn't have the web leader experience.
I feel like that I helped the fifth graders feel more welcome in the school, and that they, on the first day of fifth grade, they might feel nervous or uncomfortable. And I feel that I've helped them trust the school and feel safe there. And whenever I see them in the hallways, I say hi to them, give them high fives, and I feel like I've made a giant difference in their lives.
One of the things that I really enjoy about the web leader program is how I get to be the big brother to someone else. Growing up in a family of three, I am the middle, and I've always had that older brother to help me through my tough times and my hardships and stuff like that. So I feel that the web leader stepping in for these kids is very helpful, and it will help them through their school experiences.
Can I just chime in for a second? So these guys are amazing, and they're a small representation of our other web leaders. But they had to go through, they had to apply to become a web leader, and not everyone was selected that did apply. So they had to show a strong interest, and we had to do a little bit of background research on them to make sure that they were the right fit. And they have absolutely let up to their expectation and done a really nice job, taking this role really seriously. So we're very proud of you, and you're doing a great job.
I think we've heard a lot about the first day of school and orientation, and those really are probably the biggest pieces so far. But there are a lot of other things that they're doing along the way in addition to the orientation that Marco started to talk about a little bit with the high fives in the hallway and saying hello. But this really is a year-long program where they're touching base with the kids in different ways. You guys want to talk a little bit more about what you've done?
Yeah. So basically, one of the things that we have done is an Italian Ice little meeting with our web leader, web leader group. We got to meet up with them and check in and see how things were going. We get to play Simon Says at the beginning, just to get their energy out. And we gave them Italian Ice, and we just talked about how school was going. We did trivia and stuff about the school just so they're on point on what their school is. So if anyone wants to add on.
I think you covered all of it.
Something that I noticed in my particular group was, say there was someone who didn't really know anyone in the group, and they were just kind of in the, like, didn't really, like, in our orientation. They were not really sitting next to friends, and they just were kind of, didn't know where they were. And seeing them on our Italian Ice day sit next to people who they hadn't met before was just a good experience because I knew that I was a part of that.
Yeah.
To add on to what Dylan was saying about how the kids didn't really know each other well before they became friends in class, like, you could see from orientation the difference that it's made for us to be there to the day, today, where they're making new friends, they're having new experiences. And I think that we're a big part of that because we've helped them through their hard times and what they needed for us to accomplish for them. So I think that the web leader program has really helped the fifth graders so far.
And they'll feel more confident in school. And during, like, we'll meet up with them later in the year and each month. And so they, I think it feels pretty cool. If I was a fifth grader, I feel pretty cool that I'm friends with an eighth grader. It's a pretty cool thing.
So the first, their first planned interaction with their web groups, they were just talking about the Italian Ice social. And then the next month, we're going to be doing a more academic follow-up, like a social skills follow-up. So I think our trajectory is one month we'll do something fun and social, and then the next month, they'll be actually following part of the web core. They're going to be delivering part of the web curriculum, which is really going to be cool to see. We haven't done it yet, but they're going to be amazing.
Clearly, just by listening to them tonight.
Exactly.
I was just going to add something. On Orientation Day, I saw some, a person that was in my group, she was having a hard trouble, a hard time meeting up with the other kids and trying to try to fit in, I guess. But I talked with her, and she, over time, she got more comfortable with the group of kids that were in her group. And I felt like really, like, not proud of myself, but I felt really good about myself because I helped her, and I feel like I made a giant difference.
I will chime in and say that you did because I observed you that day with that particular student. And we went from tears to smiling. And you stayed with that student the entire time. So you should be very proud of yourself. I know we, that were watching and observing, were very proud of seeing interactions such as that.
And just an example of how powerful these leaders are, there were probably five or six adults, including myself, who tried to help and intervene in that situation, and the student was really upset. And it really took, it really took the power of a student to go up to this, our little friend who was having a hard time. So it really helped, George. Good job.
So your web is aptly named, "Where Everybody Belongs." Excellent.
I like that, it's making you all more aware of your own, you were saying in your grade level. So you're more aware of the people who may be floundering and not fitting in even at your level. So you're applying to that also, which is a great, you guys can be great leaders.
So you can see the impact it's having on the fifth graders. But what would you say the impact is having on you as eighth graders?
Well, I guess, well, like I said, I, the experience that I had with the fifth grader that was having a hard time, I felt really good about myself. And the rest of the year practically, I've been feeling good, more, better about myself. And I've been helping out with other students, not just in the fifth grade more. I've been more involved in my studies because I do feel an impact in myself and feel better about what I'm doing.
Yeah, and I feel that since I'm able to help the fifth graders, that I feel that if I'm upset, if I need something, that there's always going to be someone there for me because I was there for that person.
How do you think that this experience will prepare you for high school when you're entering a brand-new situation next year? Well, you're basically the fifth graders.
So it's basically kind of like the, so when I was in fifth grade, I was nervous. So I probably will feel the same way on the first day of school. And I know, I already know some of the kids in high school now so that I can meet up with them, and they will be the eighth grader that I was to the fifth graders.
And I think also that, like, if I'm going, if I'm nervous on the first day of school, I'll just think back of the fun times that I've had with the fifth graders and what I taught them. And I think, like, what can I tell myself that I told them to make myself feel better?
You'll be going through it next year, isn't it?
I talked to a lot of parents during the course of, you know, my day. And I've talked to a lot of parents of fifth graders who were so happy that you guys did this program, and a lot of parents of sixth graders who wished their kids could have gone through this program. And I guess my question for you is, are you talking to your friends who might be in seventh grade about what a great experience it's been and, you know, kind of giving them some energy for next year and continuing, following in your footsteps?
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
How many of there are you?
Oh, a lot.
Forty?
Is that, is that what, is that a cap?
Yeah, we have forty. So there are, there are about four web leaders per fifth grade homeroom. So they team up, they're in pairs, and each pair takes half of the homeroom. For the most part.
What he means is, like, I have a group to myself and another, like, my friend who's also covering that same homeroom, she also has a group to herself. So, like, I've really connected to, like, a lot of people because I'm all by myself, and, like, I had to.
It's a big commitment, and there are a lot of requirements as far as the training that these students had to go through. And it was required that they follow every step of that training and preparation to be a web leader. And there were, there were two students in the end who weren't able to see it all the way through. So Dylan and another web leader, because they're superstars, are managing groups on their own. They're doing a great job with it.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Sure, I'll be very proud of you, so. You're doing a great job.
Great inaugural group.
Future link leaders at the high school, I'm seeing in front of us. Yeah, it's great.
I think one of the things that we're also excited about, so this was our first year piloting the program. But now, when we're going to pitch the program to the current seventh graders for their eighth grade year, we have, these are going to be our best advertisers because they're going to be able to share their own personal experience. So Ms. Frazier and I spoke on behalf of Boomerang and talked about the program, and we pitched the idea to them. Thankfully, they bought into it. But I think that they're going to be really powerful as far as getting our next cohort of web leaders. So we're very excited for that.
Wow, thank you for coming and sharing all your experiences with us.
Thank you for having us.
That's a great work.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're doing Culture and Climate next. Culture and Climate, as Dr. Verdos is setting us up.
All right, so this is our annual Culture and Climate Survey Results. And we have our principals that are here with us this evening, too. Although we're talking about the district-level results, they each have their own school-level results. And we've done, we've had a lot of conversation about the district results, and we're continuing with that and how it plays out in looking at the school-level results. Because although we use this for district improvement planning and then also really validating the good work that we're doing, it also informs from the school level for their own school improvement planning as well. So what we wanted to do was to go through the slides with you. Not every one of them, and if there's questions that you have, we'll stop at those. Allison and I had several of them that we wanted to go through. We had a number of new questions this year. But this is the seventh year that we've administered this survey. It is administered to parents, teachers, and staff, to our students in fourth through, I'm sorry, fifth through high school as far as our students. So the first part, I just wanted to remind people, even though it's the seventh year, is that what we're, it is perception data. And so we're measuring a number of dimensions within this survey. It's academic preparation, student support, school leadership, family relations and support, parent engagement and involvement, safety and behavior, school operations, and interactions with school leaders. So we have, out of all of those dimensions, information, again, coming from those three different stakeholder groups. The surveys were administered in the middle of May through the beginning of June, and they were open for about two weeks. And reminders were sent to parents and staff to complete the survey. The other part that I want to make sure to note is that this really does go back to our strategic plan, to Objective Two on the strategic plan, which is to continue to strengthen school culture, ensuring that students, parents, and staff, and all stakeholders feel valued, safe, and have a voice. And I think that this particular tool does provide that opportunity. So when we look at the participation rates here for the last seven years, one of the things I just wanted to note here is you'll see that the parent surveys that were taken in 2018, we tripled the number of participation with parents. And I think that part of that was because we added some new questions. We had talked last year at this table of whether we had a little bit of survey fatigue and if it was a survey that we wanted to go to every other year versus annually, we decided to continue. And by adding some of the different questions that you'll see that had to do more with school safety and social emotional learning, and having that in the communication that went out to parents, I think that that helped boost some of the number of surveys that were taken. When we look across the participants by level, it's pretty consistent based on the number of staff that we have in each of the buildings. And then you can also see that there's a good representation of parents from each of the levels. On this particular slide, when we have our planning call and conference call to go over our results with K-12 Insight, one of the things that they noticed in looking at the parent survey is the percentage of parents, that overview that we have from pre-K to grade twelve, that we really do have a great representation of representing each of the grade levels. That's something that they don't always see. This slide here was one that we wanted to point out. You can see that sixty percent of our staff who took this survey have more than ten years of experience. So one of the things that that says to us is although it's perception data, we have people that have been here for a while. And so they've experienced things over that course of time. Yeah, and they've been able to, I think some of their responses reflect how they've seen things change and improve over time, which is really nice to have that institutional history.
Yeah, if they've been here more than ten years, then they have been here longer than these surveys have been in place so that they know the value of their own input.
That's a really great point, Tina. So on this particular slide here, it's looking at just the distribution of the schools, but it's the overall rating of the educational quality. And when we look at this, it really mirrors nationally. But one of the points that K-12 Insight made to us is when we look at students, that this is something that we should be really proud of. Where we have eighty-four percent of our students that are really saying that our schools are excellent or good. Usually, they have about a third that show fair.
Just before we move on from this slide, I always thought this was interesting, and I think it is absolutely something to be proud of. But I think it's interesting that our students largely don't have other schools to compare their own experience to. I mean, certainly, some move into our district from other schools. But a lot of our students, my own, for example, started here in kindergarten and went all the way through. So their perception is just based on their, where parents have, we have our own and our friends' school experience, our nieces and nephews. And same with our staff, they have other school experiences to compare it to. So I don't know.
Or other places they've worked.
I was just reflecting when I was looking at it, and that was just one thought that I had. I know a lot of students who have gone all the way through Foxborough Public Schools at this point. Doesn't diminish what they're saying at all, but they don't have, you know, necessarily a comparison to other schools and the way things are done in other districts. So still great.
So this slide here, which is looking over the last five years, I think that what you can really see is that stability and that we're sustaining over time when we look at the overall education with what we're seeing from our parents, our staff, and our students there. It really is something that I think that is important to look over time, that we have maintained the consistency. When we start to break out by the dimensions here, this is a new slide that K-12 provided us this year. And it's all of the dimensions kind of in a snapshot. And one of the things that we liked particularly about this is we were able to kind of zero in on, well, out of all of those dimensions, where do we see an area that we want to dig a little bit deeper, whether it's with students, staff, or with parents? And this one provided us, you know, opportunities for conversations, for sure. But when we look at something across and see a discrepancy between one of those stakeholder groups, then is it because of the questions that were asked? Is it because of the level? So this particular slide was one that, again, simple, but provides a lot of opportunity to dig deeper.
And I think the safety and behavior, we don't publicize all the stuff that is done for safety and behavior for safety and behavior reasons so that parents might not be aware of everything that's being done to keep their child safe. And the students might not even be fully aware of everything being done to keep them safe.
And when we get to some of those slides, too, where we're trying to get a better, a little bit more reliable, I mean, it's still perception. But I think some of the questions, we've kind of changed the wording a little bit, too, to try to get a better, well, to have them to understand what we're asking a little bit more. And I think the parent engagement one, from the student perspective, struck me because the parents and staff equally feel that there's a higher level of engagement. But I don't think, students might not know what parent engagement and involvement actually looks like for them. It might not just be mom or dad or the guardian coming to the school or on the field trip, but it's the homework, it's the shuttles, it's all the stuff that they do, coming to the conferences and all of that stuff. They may not perceive that.
And at the middle, in high school levels, there's a lot of parent volunteerism that goes on, sort of unseen. Well, almost unseen by the students. You know, you're not, when you're in elementary school, you're in the library, you're in the lunchroom. You were helping with reading groups. So they see you there. But the older kids don't necessarily see what their parents are doing when they're the treasurer of the booster club or, you know, other various roles that parents play. So I always find that one kind of humorous, isn't the right one, but interesting.
Yeah, they might not be happy if you were visible.
You're not supposed to be visible.
That, too, especially as they get older.
I also think the safety and behavior, it caught me at a very good point. But this year in particular, there was such heightened focus on school safety and maybe a lot more anxiety from both students and parents about safety in general with some of the tragedies that we've had in the nation over the past year, not thankfully in our area. But I think we've seen it over and over and over on media, social media, and in, you know, on television twenty-four-seven, that some of that may also play into our answers as parents. I'm sure it did my own when I answered the survey answer, so. I had discussed that, yeah.
And I know as a teacher, we constantly are in trainings for safety. And the students don't see that, the parents don't see that. The staff percentage is getting high.
Absolutely. I think that, and that is encouraging to see that.
I think that, and that is encouraging to see that.
So when we look at academic preparation, so we're here for teaching and learning, so I think that when you see the numbers that are up here, it really does speak to what we're here to do. And that, um, it, it's consistent over time, and we see that also with the parents. When you look at, um, those same questions that were asked of the parents, there was the two questions here that are not applicable for 2018, the feedback teachers provide on homework helps my child to learn, and the feedback teachers provide on tests and quizzes help my child to learn. Those questions were omitted, and we had a lot of discussion when we went through with all of the administrators and looking at this survey, what information's really important? What are we trying to glean from parents? And that's why you see that question that was added at the end, classroom activities keep my child engaged in learning. Because it might not be that feedback's coming back on homework, depending on how a teacher handles homework in a classroom.
Or might not be written. It might happen out loud and you might not see it.
Actually, with our technology, especially at the high school level, I, I, you know, I'm not on teams with my sons, so I don't know what, I mean, other than the conversations I have with my own children, or if you get, you know, you will get an email from a teacher's, our teachers are great about communicating with parents, but the day-to-day stuff, you don't see that, nor, nor in my personal opinion, should you as a parent of a 17 or 18-year-old kid. They're doing their own thing, but, um, it's there and it's happening. It's just not, you're not involved like you are on the elementary level, you know, that, so.
But an important conversation, if you hear them talking about what they learn.
Right.
Or what they're talking about in class. So we felt that that one would capture a little bit more, and so to see that 81% of our parents there are strongly agreeing or agreeing, um, so that provides a good baseline for us.
You, you skipped the students one for the academic preparation. I just had one, it, just as looking at this, and I had one thought, um, you know, now that I have a college freshman, is I would love for our students to be asked that question after they leave Foxborough because I know that my own son has, you know, his first physics and calculus test in a breeze, wow, I was really prepared. So, you know, it's, again, it's, it's perception data, so your perception might change once you leave here and you're out of school where, you know, you're doing really well when you start out there, and, and it's because you came out of a really great place to learn, a good school system, anyway, sorry.
No, that's great, I mean.
I know we're not going to capture that data, but it, it is something, and my son's not the only one, I know, I now am surrounded by college freshmen, as are some others.
Yes.
And, uh, I, I think that that is, uh, something that I've seen and heard from our friends too.
And, and the one where it says my teachers show how lessons relate to life outside of school, we've talked a lot about that as well, but that's one particular data point that nationally, that they've said that students are the absolute most critical on as well.
Well, and they may not understand how much until they're out of school.
I know. But that being said, there are, there are conversations and much more explicit efforts on the teaching and learning side to make those more visible to students so that they are aware of how applicable things are. So this really informs our practice every time we get data like this, we use it, which is great.
It is great.
And that first one was where you see that the wording was changed a little bit, I've been prepared to do well in this grade level. Prior to that, it was my teachers tell me what I need to know to do well. So there's some, some minor shifts that are here, but really those, those shifts in language are to really get a better understanding of where our students are. When we look at student support across, um, staff, across parents, and then also with students, that's something that we see that continues to be strong. You might see an average change of minus one, but that's not significant. Plus or minus, um, you know, even two going to three is not any kind of a significant change over time. So I think that that continues to show that we have the supports in place for students and that, um, they're seeking those supports. If I start to go too fast or anything else, please just stop me.
They're going up in the high school level, which is nice.
And that is something to be really proud of. It really is because of thinking about the support for them, um, that's something that we identified based on the data a number of years ago, and a lot of efforts have been put into place there by the high school. So that is something to be very proud of.
That's weird, the student input, so they can see how their input is evaluated and
When we move on to parent engagement, um, that, that last, um, row there, parent input is used to improve instruction at this school, and that's another one that nationally, they see really low numbers. Not that that's that low, but when you look at it with all of the rest of our hours in the 90s, it's, it's not uncharacteristic. This was slide here on the parents, um, again, we had a little bit of changes in wording just to try to be a little bit more accurate there. Um, I'm kept informed about activities like student performances, parent workshops, and other events. And I, and I pulled that one out because later in the presentation, it will talk about the parent engagement that has gone down. So then we wondered in our conversations with principals, is it because we're not communicating? But that's not the case. When we look here, we see 93% strongly agree or agree. So it, it's, it's not a communication, it just might be scheduling too.
A little more research to try to figure that out.
So when we move to safety and behavior, and I, and I think that some of the things that we see here, to Tina's point, um, it can't help but play out based on what took place with Parkland last year, and then to, to, Chris, to your point and some of the things that we're doing that, that are invisible, if you will, to others, and, and should be, absolutely.
And we did have a question on the third one when we, the way we worded that question, so I guess I'm just curious, student behaviors are addressed through a skills-based deficit approach.
I have no idea what that means.
That's what I was going to ask you.
I have no idea what that means.
That's what I was going to ask you. So I think that was a big part of the problem, or I'm making a presumption.
No, I put a star next to that and said, could someone please tell me what a skills-based deficit approach actually is? I, I can make that up in my head and, you know, what I think it might be, but I have no idea.
I don't understand it.
So let, so to go back and give a little bit of background.
You're a teacher.
And that was a conscious decision that was made, because prior to that, it was discipline is enforced at school. So we're working really hard to get away from the word discipline and to look at the collaborative problem solving through Think Kids. And that, looking at it from a skills deficit approach, so when we think about teaching reading, if a child's struggling with reading, that they may not have the skills yet, so we need to provide and teach those interventions and skills for them to be successful.
Okay.
And sometimes it's the behaviors, they don't have the skills in order to have the behaviors that we're looking for, so we need to help that, but in a positive collaborative problem-solving way.
That makes sense.
Principal, I want to add, Mike, I know, um, you, you, you say it really eloquently.
I think we did discuss it.
Not, not to put you on the spot.
We did, we did discuss it before, now it's coming back to me.
It is coming back to me.
That will versus skill, so when we, you know, the, the children, when they're misbehaving, they're having challenging behaviors, they're not doing it intentionally.
Correct.
They just don't have the ability to do it yet. And that's where we come into play, to be able to sort of identify and address the skills with the students, and then take a really, a target approach like Dr. Bertus was saying with literacy, but we're doing it with their social emotional, they're regulating it, and should I be able to address that and empower the student to gain those skills that they need to.
Okay.
So you're addressing the lack of skills.
Correct.
That is what the deficient.
We did, we did.
But in this context, I was, well, the way it was written, it seems weird. Will versus skill though, that, that makes that perfect sense.
Lack of skills.
And so we thought that if we started to use the language in the survey, that would help us to make sure that that is the way we're communicating, that it's not the discipline it really is, going back to that.
The lack of skills.
It's building capacity in everyone to address the challenges.
Yep. We also had some changes here when, um, you look towards the bottom there where it says during the school day, alcohol, alcohol use is not a problem, or drug use, or vaping in the school. So that what was changed here was saying during the school day, because we were trying to get a better understanding of why they're, why they, when they're in school, and then also adding, um, the vaping piece with the electronic cigarettes where we know this is a national epidemic, and we've done a lot within our own curriculum, um, within our wellness department, but at this.
We've got a lot of work to do, just as all schools do. The other thing, if we, on that last one, um, we also wondered about the play of social media and some of the, um, the behavior one, because that one does also have a minus, and thinking about, um, do kids really understand what bullying, is there still that misconception of what is bullying and what isn't bullying, and where is the, where is it in school, and where is it on social media, and what are the pieces with that? So we did say in the school, but then we wondered, is the social media part there too? Sorry, we didn't discuss that one.
But this is from the, the staff one, right? So they should, they should have a good understanding of, of what bullying is, isn't it?
Oh, the staff, right, the staff would have, you're right, that might, maybe I was on my, did I jump ahead?
I think you were, I think you were on the, um, parent.
Sticking on that one since, since we brought up, it has gone down 11% since 2014. Is that something that is national? Is that something that, um, stood out to anyone else? Cause I noticed it there, and then I noticed it in a parent one, it went down 9% in the, since last year.
It stood out to me, and especially with the parent one, and I think that's where I was thinking, is it what, what is perceived as a conflict versus what's perceived as bullying, because it's just such a popular word right now.
Yep.
Um, and that may not ex, I mean, we do a lot of, obviously, PD, I mean, you get it too, but even adults can sometimes misconstrue what is going on because you don't get the full story from all the parties that are involved. So I think part of it is the definition of it, and it becoming such a mainstream thing, it's automatically, and I know the principals could speak to it, it's automatically bullying. Um, but that did jump out at me too, and I did notice the same thing. So I think it's, it's worthy of more questions to find out.
Yeah, it's definitely something that I'd like to look in more, I'll hear from principals.
Well, and I think, I think, Mike, I'm going to pick on you again.
He's here, you might as well make it worth his while.
I'm, I'm just thinking of the example that you just had at your PTO, uh, recently where you showed the video, or to the children, actually, showing the difference. And can you just explain the difference about what you saw with your younger learners versus your older learners?
You know, the second day of school, we hold, um, grade level assemblies for grades one through four, and what we do is we talk about conflict and bullying, the differences between the two, what it looks like, how to report. And what we did at the end of our talk, the, um, the school counselors and I, we showed a video to the students. And it was just about a four-year-old brother with his baby brother on his lap, and the baby brother bit his finger, and the older boy, you know, little guy started crying a little bit and blaming Charlie. And so when we showed that, we paused the video and we showed it to the first grade as we asked, okay, think about conflict or bullying. Raise your hand if you think this is conflict. Raise your hand if you think it's bullying. First grade, almost every single student raised a hand that it was bullying. As we went up to fourth grade, almost all, but a few realized it was just, it wasn't bullying. So that's sort of part of the educating part that we have to. And also I think too, there's a, you know, we look at different opportunities to give students voices and parents' voices, to, to talk to us as, as principals. It's something at the school level that, at Igoe School, I can only speak for us, is I'm interested in looking at it, I was concerned, you know, with the scores that we had there and the parent perception, so that's something that, you know, our school councils already talked about our first PTO meeting. We talked about it, we addressed it, you know, as far as trying to educate the parents with that. So I think as principals, we're looking at ways that, um, we can sort of improve upon that and touch upon it, and be really curious, because there, you know, I think we all have some questions about what do, what do the numbers mean.
And I think like all data, it empowers us to have an action, which is great, because then we just continue to learn more about what's actually going on in the schools, so.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that you saw the results and already, yeah, putting, putting it into place, that's really good to hear.
And, and too, parts of that conversation are the web, like the web leaders that you saw as far as the, where everyone belongs, where everybody belongs, with the link crew at the high school too. There are lessons that are specific within that curriculum that address, you know, different behaviors and how you get along and what that, what that means too. So I think we've got a lot of things that are in place, are continuing to work on, but definitely when you see some of those percentages and you look at some of the others, that, you have, when you have really good results, but then you look, where, where can we dive deeper? And that's.
That's the whole point.
That's the point, that's right. So one of the, um, changes here, and this was throughout when we looked at the student safety and behavior, that when you see changes in wording, we had teachers before, and we changed that to staff, because there's a lot of adults that work in buildings, it's not just, not just teachers. So it was important for us to look at, um, staff, so like most students respect staff at this school, and again, the only word that was changed was staff from teachers. But it's, it can then bring a different percent when you, when you see that. So it's, it's really important for us to look at the language, and it was really intentional and changes that were made. Student behaviors that are addressed in this school, again, that goes back to that skills deficit approach. Prior to that, the question where that one was changed was discipline is enforced at school. There's, there's many different behaviors. So again, I think that as we transition language, um, we're definitely looking at that, but we're also asking the questions of what the numbers might mean in relation to the language that's used.
Well, and I think it's a transition for students too, because if we, again, we went back 10 years ago, what it, how we addressed behaviors then is probably what students were very accustomed to, that maybe fell into a more, you might perceive it as discipline. So they might not even be aware of how behaviors are being addressed now because of the, the approach that we're taking is so different. It's a teaching approach.
And this was again, looking at all of those dimensions that we looked at before, but just from the, the student perspective. And when those slides that were prior to that and looking at, um, parents versus staff, the, the students are kind of in the middle between the parents and the staff, which I think is, is expected in a way because they're in the school, so they have a little bit more of an understanding of what takes place throughout the day. And again, it's perception, so when we're saying in this school, when we're looking at something, um, whether it's alcohol or drug or vaping, it's, can still go outside the school, even though we're trying to get within the school, whether it's, you know, social media, um, not in those cases, but I think that it, it can also make a difference too in what their perception is as far as how prevalent something is. And then the school resource officer question, that was a new one, um, where we wanted to get some baseline data there to see, and not surprising here, you have students that are saying that 55%, but you have a higher percentage with our staff and with our parents as far as knowing that we have that school resource officer that's present, and, um, we're really fortunate that the town supported to have a second one. So now that we have Officer Azavito just for, for our schools now and not shared with the charter school.
It's great. I noticed that on the slide, I think it's the previous one that said, that I feel safe at school, 87% said they feel safe, so maybe that is part of why they might not think that the SRO is a necessary presence because they feel safe at school. I don't know. I, I just, I, I, I found that interesting.
I also think the school resource officer does so much behind the scenes.
Behind the scenes, again, yeah, I, I agree with you on that.
They're completely underappreciated.
Yeah, well, they, they don't understand necessarily how much he does to, um, help get behind the scenes, I agree.
The school bus, um, this was one where, looking at, uh, the percentages here, you're, you're getting in those, you know, the 90% here, so that's something that we had identified a number of years ago as well. We have, was it half the school buses now bill that have cameras on them, and as we continue through CIP, we're adding with any buses that are purchased with the cameras. So that has been a nice addition to them. When we look across school operations, whether it's student, staff, or, um, parents, it's very consistent in the experience. Under school operations, it's clear that we have a very supportive community when we think about the curriculum and the resources, um, technology that's provided in our schools, our facilities, and that's definitely, um, a, a good representation of the very supportive community that we have. In regards to school leadership, I think that this, I mean, you see the principals sitting here this evening, and, and that's, that really sends a very loud message, and so does, does this information. When we look at our staff and when they're looking at their school leadership, such, such high marks there. And, um, we're very fortunate to have the staff that we have, and our, our school leaders as well. And we're very fortunate to have the staff that we have, and our school leaders as well. Anything I'm missing? Please go ahead.
On faculty relations, support and staff, that's the one we're on, right? Forty, yes. I think it's been very well reported about the strong investment that we have in our professional development. And when you look at, there's a lot of cartoons out there, if you were Googling them, about how teachers feel about professional development. So to see that 90% of our staff feels that there is a value in the sessions that they're attending, and that it helps them, empowers them to meet student needs, is really a feather in the cap of the professional development committee that works to put on really relevant and timely professional development for our teachers. So, I'm really proud of that one.
Yeah, that's incredible.
Yeah, it is.
I disagree.
The other, the other metric on this slide that I thought was interesting and rewarding is that the last one, the bottom one, about collabora, collaboration time? Because I know that that has been something we have been working on through our strategic plans for the last few years, and it seems to be working. So this is good.
Good to see.
And I enjoy teaching at the school 99%.
Yeah, I literally get goosebumps. It's amazing.
That's fantastic.
It says a lot about what this is all about. It's the culture and the climate that we, it's an active, I mean, to your point, with our principals being here, it's an active investment in continuing to keep that a place where people feel safe, where they feel valued, where they feel welcome and included. So, it's so nice to see it show up in this way, because it is something that's very intentional. And it's a lot of work. They work hard at it.
And the previous slide said solve problems too. So there was 92% in that, that said we solve problems together. So you put solving problems together, and they feel like they can solve problems together with leadership? And it's really good. I thought that solve problems is an excellent question.
I agree. I'm glad you pointed that out.
And when there are interactions that are had with staff, with our leadership, when you see 97% across the board here, for staff with school leadership, as far as being, being available, being ready, you know, feel like, you know, my concerns are heard, and again, responded to in a very professional manner, you're hitting the ceiling there. So again, the culture and the climate within the teaching environment. And this next slide, it also, I think, shows strength with parents when they have interactions with school leadership, because in this bottom part, it's only those that maybe had, had a problem that they needed to solve. And this is their perception and when that they did go forward and have to have that problem solved. So again, it speaks to our leadership at the building.
And this is one that we've seen, as we said, we've had this, this survey for a while. I remember active conversations about this data, and how they were gonna use this data to improve these numbers. And you can see since 2014 that these numbers have improved with parents. So, again, something that's been empowering people to make changes.
One of the interesting comments that came out of our kind of analysis call with K-12 is when they were saying about, as far as the, those percentages there with parents, they're answering within a context of the judgment of what the answer was to them, not necessarily, you know, how quickly they responded, it's a matter of whether I liked your answer or not. So I think that that still really speaks highly of, yeah, the leadership within each of our buildings. So under other topics, we have our transition to middle school and our transition to high school. And where we see here, you know, high levels of agreement in that the transitions were effective, I can't wait to see.
Next year is gonna be a big difference.
After web and link. I think that where we're already doing really well, but again, another area that's been a lot of work in the last number of years, that we'll see increases there as well. This particular slide was one that, could be one for us as well, but really just being able to compare the last two years very quickly, and looking at the responsibilities from the student here, and where parents' perception is, and how, you know, what are their study habits? Like, are they taking responsibility? Looking at, you know, behavior transportation and the availability of extracurricular activities. So nice increases there. When we look at the high school, again, really some, some nice gains here. My child received useful help for the transition from middle school to high school. 93% of parents are already saying strongly agree or agree. So based on the feedback that you were talking about before, I can imagine.
Absolutely.
That it's, it's a more positive experience. But that really does speak to the teachers coming in on, you know, the welcome back nights, and the, whether it's popsicles or any of the things that are taking place before the school year starts.
Well, it's also things that people don't see, like the vertical conversations between the middle school and high school staff, so that we can ensure a smooth transition for students. Every year, we reflect on how to make that process better, because things come up that we say, rats, we should've done that. So we keep improving that.
Even this year, on the first day for teachers, which was the link crew orientation here at the high school, I know Bevy and I were both there when we clapped, and I don't think you were there, but we clapped, we clapped everybody in with all of the teachers. I thought that was awesome. And as a freshman, because, you know, you're really only going to meet, you know, your five or six teachers as a freshman, and it's, it's kinda, there's a lot of teachers here in this building.
See the whole high school staff.
But to see all the staff there, clapping for them, and being enthusiastic, and all the administration, and the guidance counselors, and you, and it's awesome. It's fantastic. I think that this is just gonna continue to show improvement, I really do, based on what has happened in this last year. So that was a good day. That was a good.
Good way to start the year.
So this last section was a new section for us, and this was to target social emotional learning. So it provides baseline data for us going forward. And it's looking at, from the perception of parents, of their, their child promotes acceptance, the school promotes and celebrates differences. My child's school encourages other people's views, even if they are different. And my child encourages students, my child's school, excuse me, encourages students to understand how others think and feel. So we didn't know what this would look like, as far as being the first time out of the gate, asking these particular questions. And to see that, you know, 85% of parents are saying that my school does promote acceptance, that's, that's an ongoing conversation that we're having. And one of the conversations, when we look at the, that next one on celebrating differences, how can we do a better job at all levels? That came out through our bias and discrimination program review, and ways to really celebrate at the different levels what that looks like, and how can we make it visible?
And I think when you have a program called Where Everybody Belongs, that's only going to improve that metric, because we're embracing everybody for who they are, even if they're different.
Were you surprised if you had a school that has high numbers for promotes acceptance? Which is, those are good numbers, right? And then when you turn back to some of the bullying questions, I was a little surprised, because there was a very low, the parents one, there's only 42% bullying and threatening behavior is rare at the school, which meant 58% thought it was kind of prevalent. But I, I just, I was, I was wondering that, because if, if your school promotes acceptance, those seem disjointed. It really did. I think if you're promoting acceptance, then I'm not sure you're bullying. And I have no data to say that they're, they're not linked, but it's just surprising.
Just because the school's promoting it, doesn't mean that.
That it's actually happening.
Yeah.
Or perceived, or perception.
That's a good point, that it's actually happened. So promoting is just one thing is saying, right? As opposed to doing.
Or that it's not occurring outside of school hours, at the mall, at Patriot Plays, over social media, on the weekends, among students in the school, which gets attributed to the school, because you don't know.
Or it's just conflict, and it's actually not, you know, we don't know if it's bullying. Right, that's true too.
Hey, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The question said at the school for the bullying one, I believe? But that could've been interpreted as, it might start at the school, then continue on Facebook or something like that.
Up to school, yeah.
Most of the issues at school that I see in my middle school, start at home, I mean, start online, and then it continues, then it ends at the school.
Correct.
When they see each other. Yeah.
From what I've experienced, having two students that came through our school system, is that we are very pro accepting everyone, and I've seen it with all different levels of students. So I'm kinda surprised it's not higher than that. But that is, as you say, it's all perception, it's what they actually see, or, like, I was very involved, so I saw it. But I expect that to go a lot higher.
One of the other things that we have at the school level are verbatim reports. So any of the questions that were like open-ended, where comments could be added, some of them are quite funny, but, you know, some of the things that are written, and some are quite insightful.
Okay.
So that's another piece of information that we drill down and look at. So if we have something that we're like, hmm, we can then look to see if there's any written comments. And it can be, you know, quite informative. From the student perspective, as far as looking at promoting acceptance and celebrating differences, again, the celebrating differences there, that's the lowest out of those four indicators. But that's something that we need to make more visible. And so how can we make that more visible? So that's an ongoing conversation, and then that's something that I, you know, had mentioned too, as far as getting the student perspective, whether it's through the advisory group or through focus groups. What are ways, because we have so many different things to celebrate, our, when we look at our ethnicity and diversity, it might not be as diverse, but we're very diverse in our cultural proficiency, in cultural backgrounds, and what does cultural proficiency look like? And what we bring forward to be able to celebrate different backgrounds? You know, years ago, we really worked hard to say, no, we're all the same. Where it's really, that was a disservice to students. We need to be able to embrace and celebrate differences, and have people be proud of the backgrounds that they bring forward.
Well, it reminds me, I was in a first grade classroom a couple of years ago, and I said something to a student, and I said, it's because I'm special. And the student said, we're all special. You're not that special, because we're all special. I was like, that's right. I was glad that they knew they were special.
She pegged you down.
Yeah, it was great.
That's good.
It was good.
So, and then there's the same indicators there for staff that you see, you know, 99% of staff.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I see.
Are saying promotes acceptance and celebrating differences, you see that higher, but really encouraging other views at 94%. And my school encourages students to understand how others think and feel 96%.
That's the numbers I expected.
So this was the interesting slide, going back to when we looked at, was it, I think, 93% as far as how we are communicating? But when you look at this slide here for parents, now granted, we need to keep in mind that our participation rate tripled. So your sample size is going to play a factor here. But still, when we look at the number of, you know, school plays and performances, school-sponsored and the arts presentations, or sporting events, 39% or 43% are saying that, you know, they've gone to those events in the last past year. I don't know that I necessarily believe those numbers, because I see a, a lot of parents out there supporting students.
But they all took nose dives, from 14 to 18.
I do think it's interesting, your point, that you said you were always involved, and you were the, and I think when, when you're that person, you always do the survey. And then the net got a little wider this time. So it might be people who are, don't have the opportunity to be as present or as available, but they gave their feedback this time. Because when you start to do the math on some of these, it's almost literally, it's two-thirds less, so it's the triple effect. I was fascinated by the numbers. I do think it's interesting. But it's certainly not a lack of PR, and it's certainly not a lack of, I mean, maybe, maybe we have, maybe we have too many opportunities. We do have a lot of things that people can't attend.
And a lot of the PTO ones, I know at the Ahearn, they're on Facebook Live, so you can watch it at your home, you can watch it on your phone.
I like that she did that.
Yeah.
I think that's a great way of doing it.
It's a great idea, I didn't know that.
Submit the questions right there.
Sarah Ludoni does it.
Does it decrease the attend?
Maybe you'll have to ask the question, are you an online participant?
Right, do you, do you feel like it has decreased the attendance at the meetings?
It might come to that.
At the Ahearn?
Right.
PAC?
The physical attendance?
No, not the PAC PTO, but I have noticed, and perhaps it's due to parent work schedules, that there seems to be a few less parents at that open house night, you know, that beginning open house night. It's not that same foot traffic or crush. But maybe that's because the students who are there have had older siblings, so that parents don't have a need. I don't know, but I was looking at the numbers, and if you take 98% of 261, 64% of 660, you get the same number of human responses, so it's the same.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
But it looks like a real nose dive.
Ratios are different, are there, right.
Okay. The absolute number is the same, but the ratio is different.
Yeah, right.
A lack of interest, yeah.
Were there any other slides or questions that you had? Because I know there are a lot of slides, some of them we move quickly through.
I am glad we continue to do this survey. I hope we do continue to do it moving forward. I would definitely encourage parents to keep filling out the survey. It doesn't take very long at all. It's really valuable information, as, you know, to you, to all of us. And if you don't get your opinion out there, it's really, you know, it's much more productive to spend five minutes doing this survey than it is to, you know, dash off something on social media that you might not get a response to. But this, this is one way of getting your concerns about what is going right, and what it might not be going right, in your opinion, you know, to the people who can really make a difference and do something about it. So I say when that comes out, do the survey, please, parents.
And it really does, it's, it's perception data, but it does drive us going forward in order to strengthen at the school level and at the district level, in that schools have even taken smaller surveys to then send out based on some of the data that they're questioning, or want to dig a little bit deeper. So it's actionable for us.
Very valuable.
It is, extremely so. Thank you to everybody who took the time to do it, and maybe we'll get even bigger numbers of participation next year.
There's a lot of information in this meeting, trying to watch and say that, see that we're staying on time. So bear with us as we go into our next presentation. I'm going to switch the slides over as we look at the results from the OECD test for schools.
This is always exciting.
We have to move again. Is there more slides?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
I hope you didn't get too comfortable.
Get a, bring a chair on this side.
On the couch over here.
Just a mirror.
So in 2018, in April actually, we participated in the OECD test for schools, the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development, Paris, France. This was something that we elected to participate in last year, and chose to continue, because it is the only tool that we really have, that's an international benchmarking tool, that allows us to see how our students are performing at a global level, to compare against other schools across the United States, and then across the globe. And that is one of our, again, going back to our strategic plan, and the first objective in our, in goal three, really to provide opportunities for our students. But at the same time, how can we measure that? And so this particular test, which is based on the PISA, is an international test that compares the academic achievement of countries around the world. It's an initiative that was part of the Global Learning Network, which is a learning community of educators and district leaders who are participating, to really look at global practices that we can, we can learn from each other and improve within our own districts by looking at national research and looking at effective practices. So this particular perspective really does help us toward that global vision here in Foxborough, and our desire to prepare our students so that they can succeed in a global economy. So this test was given to ninth graders and 10th graders, depending on if they were 15 or not. It was completely random. And the test itself really is bringing a level of rigor, because it's, it's a cognitive test, when we look at reading, math, and science. It's something that provides us an opportunity to be very action-oriented, based on the information. The report that we receive back is actually 139 pages long. There's a lot of information for There's a lot of information for us to analyze. So we're continuing to dig into that information and at the same time, we had that from last year. So we didn't know last year how our students would perform at this global level. We were really excited based on their performance and looked at that as a K-12 success story in that it's not just what happens in their freshman or sophomore year.
Just to remind everybody who might be watching at home, this is, these are 15-year-olds, but it's not every 15-year-old in the school system.
No, it's a random sampling.
Thank you, Becky, yes.
Yeah.
So we don't select them, they are just random.
Correct. So what they ask us is, um, initially, Diana, it's 85 that they asked for originally and they, out of all of our 15-year-olds, they tell us who those 85 are. We actually had 72 that participated in April. Because sometimes, because it's random, you might have a student that, um, is in a particular program to where they couldn't participate, you know, um, so, or you have them opt out.
They also, they do, and they also go so far as to if we have a new student who comes in during that window, we have to upload again and they take another roll again.
Oh, that's interesting.
So it's pretty, they want to make sure that it is a true random sample of students.
And they're also looking at gender to have equal female and males that are taking the test as well.
Thank you.
That's interesting too.
And it's, so again, this is global benchmarking against looking across the world, but it's also looking at socioeconomic status. Because there's a, a lot that we need to look at as far as equity. Um, it provides us an opportunity to look at instructional motivation. So our students might do really well, but are they motivated? What is the, the relevance to what they're learning and how their perception of how it relates, um, to the real world? And then student-teacher relations, we know how important relationships are. So there are a number of things that are measured on this, aside from just the cognitive scores, if you will. And then the end goal really is that we can use this as a determinant of our students and if they're being, um, prepared adequately for college in the workplace. And so this particular tool provides that, um, opportunity for us. I have a couple of slides here that just wanted to share because, um, when we're talking about preparing students for, for a global workplace, we've talked at this table too, that some of the jobs don't even exist yet in what we're preparing students for. And what are the skills that they're going to need? What does, what does that look like in order to make sure that they're going to be successful when, um, they leave us and go on? This summer at the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Institute, Allison and I were there and our, um, one of our keynote speakers was Scott McLeod, who has written the book Dangerously Irrelevant. And this is one of the slides that he had in his presentation. And this is looking at worker task in the US economy and it's looking over a 50-year time span. And this originally came from some MIT, um, professors who had written a white paper back in 2003. And then they went back and one of the ones on that original white paper had updated it with another, um, individual for MIT and looked at, over the course of 50 years, where do we see the percentiles increasing and that you see the red and the blue lines there at the top and that, that stark incline, that non-routine analytical and non-routine interpersonal skills. And not looking at educational level, but looking at the skills that are necessary to prepare students at a global level and in the workplace moving forward. So that was one that we thought, well, well, what does that mean? Non-routine analytical, where we're talking about problem-solving, critical thinking, um, communication. All of those things we talk at, talk about here at this table and in our, whether it's professional development, what teachers are, um, really working to accomplish with their students, are really getting them engaged through collaborative problem-solving and having opportunities to analyze information in order to master content. But it's much more than those non-routine manual or just routine manual skills.
And if you remember the changes in the standards in the math and the science, they have the practices where you need, and also ELA, making an argument and defending your argument and critiquing the reasoning of others. It's a lot to do with reasoning skills and then a lot of collaboration between students and cooperative learning to solve problems. But that's the stuff that, that employers want. They want people who can think and who can actually solve problems in real time. Something they've never seen before, taking the skills they have and applying it to that. And that's what we're trying to bring to the classroom. And we've seen it in the last few years, the change in instruction.
I mean, really to succeed in this global era, we, we need students that are able to engage in rigorous and relevant, you know, opportunities, but, um, to have that critical thinking and problem solving. This next slide is one that is showing the average annual employment growth. This came out of the growing skill divide in the United States labor market that was published, um, in May of 2017. And it was published by the Federal Reserve Bank of St. Louis and looking at what are those jobs that are really increasing? The cognitive non-routine, you can see that, that orange bar where it's really increased. If you can see below those particular, um, jobs that are there, that's where you see the computer and mathematics. That's where you see some of the, the business and financial operations, the things that are going to be, those analytical skills, which are the same as those, you know, non-routine analytical skills that you saw on that first slide. When you look at the manual non-routine where you see increases there, those as compared to that first slide are, are really the, the non-routine interpersonal skills. It's looking at jobs that are, um, personal care and service, the healthcare support. So again, it's just really showing the importance of collaboration and critical thinking and problem-solving and all of those 21st century skills we've talked about for a while. But thought that was important because we're, we're looking at a, an instrument that can be an international benchmarking tool for us. And what do kids need in order to be globally ready? And, and that's what we're preparing them for.
I just want to ask a question, did we apply as a state again, Miss, um, Foxborough? Last year we applied as a state versus a town when we took the test.
So.
No, that's a different test.
You're thinking of PISA. Okay. PISA, Massachusetts does that and PISA is given every three years.
Okay, thank you, that's what I was talking about, okay, thank you.
So again, we had 72 randomly selected 15-year-olds that took this, um, test in April here in Foxborough. As I said before, we really do see this as kindergarten through high school when we look at how our students, um, fared. And then in the United States, over 400 schools in over, um, in 33 states participated in the OECD test for school. These couple of slides here, I'll go through them quickly, but it really is the themes that are embedded within this particular test. So it's looking at the cognitive piece with the reading, writing, I'm sorry, the reading, the science and the math. It's also providing a reliable benchmark so we can compare performance internationally. When they've done comparability studies with, um, this and PISA as well as the TIMS test, which is given every four years, you have the correlation that's there. Equity is something that we're, been talking about even more so and really looking at, um, meeting this, leading all students. The reading breadth and depth, we'll talk about a little bit more of that, talking about being those deep and wide and varied readers. It's something we talked about last year and it's something that we saw come up again on the results from this year. Student motivation, so again, they may do really, really well in the math, but are they moti- motivated, do they see the relevance for them? And is the effort they're putting in worth it? So it looks at that, it looks at, um, that engagement factor. And it also can have cross, cross ties too when we look at the culture and climate survey. So we, we take all of these different pieces of information. The self-efficacy, self-confidence is really important for students. So is it because that they don't feel confident when we look at the math scores? Or they feel really confident maybe in math, but not in science? So that's another measure of information that we get from this.
That's a big one that we've been working on with growth mindset and thinking that, you know, everybody, you, you might not have it yet, but that was part of my dissertation, was on self-efficacy in the classroom environment. And we have made many strides and many, again, intentional efforts to build that growth mindset in students. And we see it translated in these results, which is pretty cool and pretty exciting.
And then that, that last theme there, really identifying our strengths and challenges, but looking at student-teacher relations. Um, so when we see in the data that students feel very supported by their teachers, that they can go to their teachers for help, that's really important information for us because that's what we want and to be able to see that in the data is important.
I wish we had the band here for the drum roll, that would have been really nice. You went so quickly to it, we couldn't even build up to it. No, I'm not going to do it, go ahead.
So what you see on this slide is our mean performance in comparison to the United States, but also on the right-hand side, the only countries that outperformed us. So last year, we were, um, very pleased with our results and we are very pleased with our results again this year. We didn't know what to expect after giving it for the first time and again, where it is random. But I think that, um, what we're seeing here is the result of a lot of efforts that have been put in place and a lot of curriculum implications too, particularly when we look at, um, math. But to, to go to reading, so we can see that only Singapore, Hong Kong, China and Canada outperformed Foxborough. We outperformed, um, the United States there with 526s compared to 497. Later in a slide, you'll see when we talk about the different proficiency levels, the performance levels. We were significantly above the United States in math and science, um, not in reading, but that's just with the mean, when you look at every one of the levels, we are significantly higher. When we look at math, only Singapore and Hong Kong, China outperformed Foxborough. And in science, Singapore and Japan.
And just to give a, a little bit of context to the math, Finland has been really hot on the international scene lately in terms of math. And when this, when these results came in, I might have stayed up till midnight that night looking and then I couldn't sleep because I realized we beat Finland and that's pretty awesome. Just saying, that was math.
I will say that I had a text that said we beat Finland.
You may, you may have gotten a text.
Might have, in the middle of the night, you sent her it.
I was a little excited.
Finland's been the talk of everyone.
Everyone.
For years.
Years.
It's like, what are you doing different in Finland?
Right. Right.
Well, Allison, you should be really proud because these results, well, are rooted in a lot of the efforts that were yours and yours. But as the curriculum director for math and science, these are the kids who, I mean, my son, Sam, took it last year, not this, 2017. And his kindergarten class was the first to have the new math curriculum. I think it was Think Math.
It was.
And, um, I mean, that was a long time ago now.
Long time in 11th grade.
Yes. But these children have, are showing the results of the curriculum efforts the district has made, you have made, you have made.
But the teachers.
And the teachers.
And the leadership in the buildings.
Professional development, all of it. But there, there's a lot to be proud of from our, our school leaders, so thank you.
What's most exciting is that they, they can perform this way and that they feel good about themselves.
Yes.
And that, and they believe that they can do it because we need them in the pipeline for STEM. That's really important, that's what this is all about.
Mm-hmm.
So, anyway, sorry, I digress.
No, and I think, and another important.
I didn't interrupt, but I wanted to say something.
And I'm glad that you said that. And another point too, that I think is important to make is when we think of something like MCAS, that's measuring the standards.
Correct.
So that's a standards-based assessment. This is a cognitive test, so it's really measuring the thinking skills of our students and how they're able to apply what they have learned.
Right.
We're not after answer-getters, we're after thinkers.
Right. We have thinkers, that's right.
Oh God, do we have thinkers.
So these next few slides, we're just going to break down the reading, the math and science and look at that at a global perspective and how we performed. So this slide here shows you the other countries there and what their, um, scores were as compared to ours. So you can see there that our 526, I mean, Hong Kong and Canada, were only 527.
I mean, it's, I know, that's what I'm, just saying.
So it's compared to the 2015 scores in those countries? Are 2018 scores now?
No, that's their scores from, um, PISA from 2015 because PISA is only given every three years, so it goes and compares. Um, but we see with their scores, with, they're still taking the OECD test for schools, but it compares to the PISA.
Okay.
So we'll have new PISA scores the next time around if we do this again.
Coming up.
In 2019.
Next year? So that would be next year, we would have new scores. And one of the articles that I was reading, what I was referring to before, when we, when they do the correlation between the TIMS study, which is math and science, and they can, that's only given every four years and the PISA is given every three years. It's only, I think, every 12 years that they're given at the same time and that's when they were able to do the correlation.
Yeah.
And it's highly correlated.
I know, and in the math, Hong Kong was 548 and Foxborough was 547. I mean, that's just.
Just saying.
Yeah. I mean, that's like 526 and 527.
It's pretty odd.
And, and when, when you really dig into this information for what's actionable for us, what can we do with our own curriculum and instruction to make the difference? That's where the proficiency rubrics come into play. And that's the performance level. So we're looking at our students and how did they score at one of those six levels? With level five and six being the goal, because that is going to show that they are globally ready. So if you're scoring at level five, you're able to critically evaluate texts and build hypotheses about them, drawing on specialized knowledge and accommodating concepts that might be contrary to expectations. As opposed to a level one, which is below proficient, you're recognizing a main idea and text. So what we do is we unpack those descriptors of each of those performance levels and really look at what the difference is. And it kind of comes down to the verbs, if you will, as far as at a level six, we're looking at them being able to critically evaluate, what does that look like with our own curriculum? So any of the performance tasks that we have, we can use this information to look at our own lessons and look at the rigor and the relevance of, of what we have within our own curriculum. 15% of our students in Foxborough scored at level five and six. When you look across the levels, the striped bars indicate whether our distribution is statistically significantly different than the United States and you can see at every level that we were. So, um, where we have 15% of our students performing at that top level, 9% was the United States. So then you can look across and to see down, um, at, you know, level one or, or below that level. So we take that information and say, okay, looking at the rubrics, looking at our own curriculum, what can we do to try to move our students into those upper levels? To be able to critically evaluate texts, to provide opportunities for varied, um, reading materials. The goal is deep and wide readers. Those are students who have high levels of awareness about effective learning strategies and also read all sorts of materials with, which is fiction and nonfiction. And through our, um, readers workshop, that's an opportunity for students to self-select texts and to give them a variety of texts. So that's something that we're looking at, um, how can we provide more? Our students that were performing at that deep and wide level, ours are outperforming the United States too. So we can dig into each of those different indicators, if you will, within those different, um, areas within the reading text. This next slide is, um, I, I know Allison wants to talk a little bit about this because this is part of her own dissertation work too.
Well, I was just excited, if you see the, the, um, the words in blue, schools with a socioeconomic profile similar to that of your school. And this is how our students who, um, there was actually a quote from the, uh, the OECD people that said, for our kids in our high-risk groups, we were blowing the ceiling off of what they are able to achieve, which to me speaks to the idea of equity and access, which we are really focused on and seeing the kids' achievement. We want to always be over that line and the size of the circle only indicates the size of the school. There's no other definition to that. So we are a, a smaller school, but having those results over the line. And if you can see that plus in the, in the background, that's the confidence interval for our school's performance. So we're right smack dab in the middle of where we want to be. So I do want to add to that, Amy, but that, I was really excited about that because that's something we focus on all the time, is making sure. And that's kids at all ends of the spectrum, um, but that is a category that if you compare to the rest of the United States, our students are doing better. They were really impressed with us in that category. And that was consistent across reading, science and math.
And you even saw it higher in some of the other areas.
Yes.
So when we move to math, I think that this is the, the part that, going back to Tina, what you were saying, the amount of, um, work that's been done in this area, from professional development to the work teachers, a lot, a lot of effort, a lot of hard work has been put in this area because the standards are very. put in this area, because the standards are very different. When we used to have really kind of a mile-wide, now we're trying to be more narrow and not have as much per-grade level, which is more on the standards, but it's a lot more of what are we doing within math? There's a lot within the standards, so it might look simple at the surface level, but it's much more than that. And there's a lot of professional development that has taken place.
One of the biggest changes, I would say, outside of the content being different, was having the practice standards. It wasn't so much the what you teach, even though that changed, it was the how you teach it. So it was a lot of relearning for people, and I think if you think of anything that you've tried to learn again, especially if you're a parent who's helped their child with math, it's not easy.
I still can't do the magic boxes. I'll be honest with you.
It's a magic square.
Yeah.
See, I can't even, I don't even call them by the right names.
The kids know.
But they know.
That's all right.
But most of our teachers, and myself included, had to relearn that. And I think that is something, could be a Herculean effort.
Yes.
So it was an ongoing support. It was the commitment of the community and the school committee to invest in math specialists. It was the leadership at the building level. Every PD session we have, the building principals are there. They are engaged in the grade-level meetings, in the professional learning. And that, I think, has made, and then the vertical, articulation with the high school. I mean, this had major implications when we changed the standards for the high school. So it's really been, takes a village to get results like this. And then to see the kids be empowered and to see how they've responded to the instruction is the best part, because they, math is not like that subject that nobody likes anymore, which to me is the coolest thing ever.
So again, there at 547, it's only Hong Kong at 548, and Singapore at 564. But when we were able to dive into this a little bit further, going back to that motivational piece, too, we see that we're significantly different from the United States in looking at our students and how that teachers are interested in their well-being, as an example, that they're available and wanting to support them. When we look at, I will learn many things in math that will help me get a job. These are some of the other things that are measured within that. So it's more than just the score there to see that they're doing well, but it then again goes back to whether they're seeing that it's important for their future. So again, going back to the rubrics here, where if you're looking at a level six, it's they can apply this insight and understanding along with a mastery of symbolic and formal mathematical operations and relationships to develop new approaches and strategies for attacking novel situations. A very high level there in order to score at a level six. When we look at level five, again, you're comparing, you're evaluating problem-solving strategies, so it's going back to that higher level. When we look across the performance levels, so in the highest-performing countries and economies, such as Singapore and Hong Kong, the only two that scored above us, over fifty percent of them score at level four or higher. But in Foxborough, fifty-five percent of our students scored at level four or higher. And then when you look at the top level of five or six, thirty-four percent of Foxborough students scored at or above level five. OECD told us they've never seen scores that high.
The fifty-five and the thirty-four?
The thirty-four percent scoring at level five and six.
Yeah. My note is, they have never seen this. They were, had all kinds of questions for us about what goes on.
It's crazy. It's crazy. Six percent of the United States is there, and we're at thirty-four. That's like really through the roof. It's like, wait, that's like, how do you close? It's profound. It really is great.
You might have been excited about that.
I was a little excited about that.
It's unbelievable.
Did you get another middle-of-the-night text?
It was all on the same one.
Oh, the same text.
Fantastic.
And then, again, going back to looking at the whole band of our students from socioeconomic, from low to high, where are they expected to perform? So schools that are above that diagonal line that you see there, that are well above the diagonal line, perform better than what would be reasonably expected based on socioeconomic status of their students. You can see we're all by ourselves, way up there above that line. We don't see it as high above, like you saw on the slide before, in reading, and it's not as high in science. So that provides an opportunity for us to say, okay, what do we need to do more in reading? What do we need to do more in science with those levels? And again, it's actionable data for us that allows us to strengthen our own program.
And this one, I didn't say this before, but it is important to note that this is normed. So if you look at the axes on the bottom, our socioeconomic background overall is statistically significantly higher than some of the schools that participate in this. However, for this report, it's normed with all the ones that are similar to you, and that's how you performed against them. So that's important.
When we move to science, our mean average was 531, so again, only Singapore and Japan.
Also very excited about the science, too.
Performed there. But one of the indicators that came out with this is that our students also see that science is worthwhile, because I learned that it's going to improve my career path.
Absolutely.
So they do see the relevance that's there, which is critically important. So again, going back to our levels, performance levels there, so when we look at levels five and six, which is the goal, if we look across in the United States, twenty-seven percent of students performed at level four. On the science scale compared to the OECD average of twenty-eight percent, Foxborough was twenty-nine percent of our students scoring at level four, and then ten percent of our students scoring at five or above.
Wasn't it eleven?
Eleven, yeah.
Was it eleven?
Yeah.
Nope.
Don't want to get us...
Yes, eleven. And then going back, you can see, again, with the socioeconomic status, we're still above that diagonal line, but we're not as high as we were for math. But this is the information, whether it's OECD tests for schools, whether it's MCAS, when we're looking at our different student populations, whether it's special education, English language learners, the socioeconomic with free and reduced lunch, looking specifically at how we're serving all students.
And I do think it's important to point out that the shifts in science are just now starting, I mean, with earnest, with the practices, because we just adopted the standards last year. So there was still a lot of instruction that was around discrete skills, you know, this part of the flower, or explain miosis or mitosis. But now they're really moving towards much more of a focus on the critical thinking, the connections, the application. So I only expect these results to improve as well.
Yep, absolutely.
And they'll really be asking you questions.
Well, and that's part of being the global learning network and being the professional learning community. So we have Diana and Sue as the principals from the middle school and the high school, the department heads from the high school in math and science and English, as well as our two curriculum directors, Kate and myself and Allison, working with a number of other districts to look at how we did, but learn from each other. And they have districts asking us, what are you doing? Because they want to learn from us, but we still are able to learn from them in different areas, and then looking really nationally, too, what practices can benefit us. So this last slide here is a summary comparison. Now, keep in mind, it's completely two different groups. They're randomized students, but we wanted to see kind of together, since we have two years' worth of data, what does that look like over the two years? So when we look at reading for the last two years, so last year, we had Shanghai, China, Singapore, Japan, and Korea that outperformed us in reading. This year, only Singapore, Hong Kong, China, and Canada. You can see the mean averages are very close to each other. They're very similar for the two years. In math, Singapore and Hong Kong, China, the only that performed us. When we look last year, although the mean was a little bit higher, we had three countries that outperformed us. So it's interesting information to look at, even though it's different groups of students.
What I think's really interesting, from a psychometric sort of perspective, we, our scores are pretty consistent, but if you look at the change from like Shanghai, China last year in reading, they were 570, and they're now five, no, that was China, 527. Well, actually, that's, what's the one I'm looking at? Singapore, 540 to 535, or Singapore, 564. And if you just look at the changes they've had, they're very different from the changes that we had. That was one of the things I noticed.
What were the test scores that they used last year? If this is being compared to the PISA from 2015?
It's still the same one, because it's only given every three.
But the scores are different.
Yeah, that's my question, is why are the scores different if they're...
That's their mean on the OECD test for schools, and we compare to the mean average of the PISA.
Okay, but why isn't the PISA the same if, from 2015?
The right column is not the PISA.
The right column is not the PISA.
It's the OECD.
Okay, sorry, that's why.
Yeah. And the reason it says approximately, is because last year's report didn't give us the exact number other than the one that performed the highest. So you're looking at that bandwidth, and so it's within a point or two.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense. Sorry. Thank you for clarifying. Look, a couple of them are 552 versus 554.
It is interesting.
Or 549 versus 551. That's only two points. And then the 526 versus 527 again.
It's 531, but they're still very close.
But also, too, keep in mind, that's why the performance levels for those six levels are so important to us. That's really where the real work is.
Absolutely.
For us. So it's important to see here in the greater context, but our work is within those rubrics and those performance levels and moving our students to level five and six, so that they are globally ready.
I think the best thing that this tells me is that there's reliability in the data for us. So as we look at changes to, like, this is a reflection, I think, of our instruction and our curriculum and our practices. So we can use this as a reliable measure to say where we need to move ahead, because if the scores are wildly differently, I'd have a lot more questions, but they're really similar.
Well, they're two random samples. So I think you're right. It's fantastic. And the consistency with two random, fairly random samples.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wow.
Wow.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So a lot of information.
Very worthwhile.
Again, out of all of the pages in the documentation that we have.
A lot of work for us.
Which is this.
Yes.
That's a lot of work, and now we're down to that, right?
Yes, thank you.
Bye, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Good night, guys. I just would want to say a big shout-out to all the teachers, the students.
Yeah.
All this, everybody, I mean, like I said, takes a village, so everybody.
Yeah, I had a hand in it.
But that's exciting.
Have you met with the students yet to go?
Not yet.
I know you did that last year, okay.
We do intend to do that.
Because I know there was a lot of excitement last year, and I'm sure there will be an equal amount of excitement this year.
Do the kids get excited when you present it to them? They did. At first point, like, so last year, when we pulled them into the auditorium, we asked them, "Do you know why you're here?" And they're kind of looking at it to see who's here, and...
Oh, yes.
No, and then we...
For that test?
They're like a group.
Oh, you brought in the kids that actually took the test?
We did, we brought in the kids that actually took the test. Because it is one more test for that group of students, and we want them to take it seriously. So, you know, Diana in the high school did a really good job of saying, "You randomly selected, but it's really important information for us as a school system. So do your best." And they did.
And some of the kids were taking, you know, had just taken their MCAS exams, so it is one more test. There is a lot to do. So, yeah, kudos to all these kids who took one more test and did a great job on it.
And got great feedback, right?
I will say, as a side, NWEA, the Northwest Education Association, which is the vendor for this test, does not have the contract anymore. So we're waiting to find out who will be the vendor. And so hopefully, there will be another vendor in order to continue with the test.
Do you know why they gave it up?
Nope. I have no idea. I know that when I talked with the rep, they were very sad that they weren't going to be the vendor going forward. So I just bring that up now in case we find that there's not a vendor and we're not able, that's the reason why. But we have a lot of information from these two years that really have good, actionable work for us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Both of you.
All right. Entertaining a second reading of policy EFD, student food services accounts.
Make a motion to waive the reading?
I'll second that, Marsha.
May I have a vote on whether to waive the reading or not, please? Aye, five zeros, zero. All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve policy EFD, the student food services accounts. I'll second it.
All in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you.
Bevy, before we move on, I just wanted to thank the Policy Subcommittee for a lot of really good work on this. I thought this policy came out great, and, thank you.
Janice did what?
And Janice.
Yeah, we can't forget Janice.
Team effort, and thank you to Janice, too.
Okay, five zero zero. Excellent. October one enrollment update, please?
So you just have the updated enrollment, October first is what we report to the state. It's our official enrollment. So at this time, our official enrollment is 2,591 students.
Okay.
Is that the enrollment that the state bases it on?
Yes.
Okay.
October first and March first are our two.
Two dates.
October one and March one. Acceptance of donations.
So we have a donation here for the Taylor PTO. It's a reimbursement check for, is it, Bill, you're going to have to help me here, on Big Joe chairs.
On the chairs that came into Taylor.
They're the reading, the reading chairs.
The big puppy chairs.
Yes, yeah.
I saw a number of children sitting in those, reading. It's a chair that looks kind of like a beanbag, but it's more sturdy. And you walk in and you see kids just sitting and reading, and they look so comfortable.
Are they in the classrooms?
They are in the classrooms. There's probably three or so in each classroom, if I recall.
Like in a reading nook.
Excellent. Just kind of around, and just, you kind of want to go sit in one when you see them.
Yeah. Kids sit in laundry baskets, too, but I think they take a comfy chair over the laundry basket.
They do, they sit in, like it's a little boat, yeah.
That's great.
So the PTO paid for that?
Yeah.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Very generous. The students love them.
I only say that about the laundry baskets, because some parents were asking why they sent in laundry baskets.
I'd move to accept the check from Charles G. Taylor PTO, Inc., to the Foxborough Public Schools to reimburse for the Big Joe chairs in the amount of $926.64.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Accepted with gratitude.
With gratitude, always.
Five zero zero. Now our Kickers Club.
The second donation is from the Foxborough Kickers Club. It needs to be accepted by you. It is for the girls' soccer shorts, and it's for $449.09. And it's for purchasing the girls' shorts.
I'd move to accept the check from the Foxborough Kickers Club to the Foxborough Public Schools in the amount of $449.09 for the donation for shorts, purchase of girls' soccer shorts.
I'll second. All in favor?
With gratitude.
With gratitude.
Nothing at it.
With gratitude, five zero zero. Excellent. And now, our Bi-County Collaborative, BICO Quarterly Report. Dr. Bairdoss, please.
Okay, so this report that you have in your packet is what is sent out quarterly to member districts. It's based on some of the new happenings that are taking place. What you can see here is they've added two new districts as BICO members, Uxbridge and Hope Dell. They've also added two new programs, one that's over at the Martin School in North Attleboro, which is a specialized language-based program. And then, one of the really exciting ones, that I was able to be there for the ribbon cutting, was a specialized elementary learning center over on Providence Highway. And they completely, pretty much gutted and renovated this building to where the students had been over at the Finnberg School in Attleboro. And so it's a new school. It's beautiful on the inside, and they're in the, we're in the middle, I'm on a subcommittee of a playground that's going to be added there as well. So they just did a beautiful job, and it's a great learning space for students.
That's the building that's on the right before you, what, used to be for autism years ago?
No, it's where the...
It's not that one on the right?
Where the hockey rink.
It's right there. It's like almost, it's kind of like the parking lot, if you will. It's a great big building, and then there's a smaller grassy area to the side.
Okay, I'll have to notice that. Okay, great.
It used to be an office building slash fitness center.
Okay, I think anywhere it is.
It's not the one in front of the rink.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know where it is.
It was a dorm, too. Wasn't it for dorm for a while, for kids? Some of the hockey players.
You wouldn't know it by walking in there now from all of the work that's been done.
Wow.
Nice. So in addition to those two programs, a lot of work's been done with BICO and on their curriculum and instruction side. So Arlene Grubert, as you know, Dr. Grubert was our special ed. director here for a number of years, and she's the executive director. She's done a lot of work with the teachers and the BICO program in the area of curriculum and bringing consistency up... and bringing consistency across all of the programs in the collaborative.
Good for her.
The other, I didn't bring it with me, but they've created a brochure for BICO, which is a beautiful brochure. So when parents are looking at different programs, if their child's going into an out-of-district program, and they're, they're looking at BICO, this brochure, it really describes, well, what are the programs? And they've done a really nice job of advertising and then having a tool, a communication tool that they can hand to parents. So, and aside from curriculum, from their communication that they've done, as well as professional development, there's been a lot of work in the area of professional development. They're actually going to start offering the trauma courses that we've been offering here in Foxborough for the last several years to really meet the social emotional learning needs of students. And when they were asking at one of our last board meetings about the trauma courses, I was able to say, we've run several of them and we highly endorse them. So it's, it's just nice to have that continuity. So a lot's been happening. They have the, the two new member districts, but they have a lot of students, too, from non-member districts, which actually helps defray some costs for us.
Good. Very good.
And they're growing. I mean, they've gone from 195 students to 220. I think part of that is the, the growing needs of some of the social emotional, you know, learning needs of students. That's what they're seeing, why they opened this, the program over at the Martin School in North Attleboro.
The update on Borough School Project. Mr. Yukin, please.
Okay, so fortunately, at the October 1 meeting, the town did vote to accept the funding for the borough renovation. And obviously, the MSBA would be the offset to that funding for a portion of it. The project is now moving into the next phase. The first portion of that is the second item you'll, we'll talk about here, which is the funding agreement between the town and the MSBA. And that is based on the numbers that we did put out at the town meeting, roughly 14 million plus for the base amount. And if we use contingency money within the realms of the project that meet the eligibility side, it could be upwards in the $15 million range that they'll reimburse us. It's a $34 million project, and based on our cost estimates at this point, which is what the whole funding agreement is based on. So there are two action items I'd like you to, to address tonight. The first one is, a school building committee was designed and developed back at the first phase of this. There have been a few member changes. One of them is, I'm assuming the role of the MCPPO certified member. There's only two of us in town. Roger Headfield is retiring in December, so.
You're it.
I'm it. And then the other thing was, we did have two members resign, and we had two new members come on. Carl Fuller was one of them, and Jeff Whitehouse was the other. So basically, we have to submit this to the MSBA for their approval, and therefore, I'm also asking for your approval of this list of members to represent the school building committee. I guess the motion I'd like to see is a motion to approve the members as presented and approved by the MSBA to be members of the school building committee, and further accept the school building committee as a school committee's represent, represent, representatives for the construction and closeout phase of the Borough Elementary School renovation and expansion project.
Now, you got all that, Janet, right?
Hopefully, one of you remembers that. So I have it.
He has it.
She'll have it.
As long as Janet has it.
I thought you were going to read that back.
So basically, what you're doing is, is accepting this list as your members to the school building committee, and accepting the school building committee as your representatives as you did for the first phase, which was the schematic design phase. And this kind of officially pushes us into the next phase of the project.
Well, we have to do this. We can't let the town down now that they voted us the money, right?
I just have one question. Is anyone replacing Carl or Jeff?
Those are the two that were at.
They were at it.
Okay. I feel better about that now.
They replaced others.
They, yeah, they, they are the replacements.
Excellent additions, both.
It's not the other way around.
Definitely.
Fabulous.
I would move what Bill said.
I know, that's a mouthful. Like, where is it written?
Is that okay? Is that, yeah, please?
Yes, because it's all there.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you.
The second piece of this is for you to authorize, we're, we're still trying to confirm if it's the school committee chair that would have to sign this, or the town manager. I believe it's the town manager who has signed on this for other issues within this, but I'm waiting for legal counsel to confirm that tomorrow. But anyways, the, the project scope and budget agreement is the phase that gets us the funding to move forward. As I said, the whole budget and the whole process is based on the schematic design, where we develop what the building is going to look like, we develop what the educational program is going to be within it, what the furniture and fixtures are anticipated to be, what the technology is anticipated to be. And then we have two separate cost estimators through the process, cost estimate that twice. And so basically, that's where that $34 million project comes from. They can't, the MSBA can't allow us into the next phase without starting to fund this, because obviously, we are going to start to spend some pretty significant money between the architects and the OPMs as we move forward here. But they can't wait for us to actually have a final price to do the project. So that's why they use that cost estimate at the beginning part of this to fund the project. It also, obviously, in a sense, protects them, because, you know, who knows what you're going to do as you kind of move through this project, what other little pitfalls you may find. And they can't be out there, basically, with the funding that they have to do for all the other communities, having something that's an unknown. So this locks their number in. The only thing that would reduce their number is if, when we actually go out to bid, that the numbers actually come in significantly lower than their number, obviously.
Then their number will.
Their percentage stays the same, but their number drops.
Correct.
And that's why it's, it's been very confusing at town meeting when people ask, why do we have to fund the entire cost of the, the thing, the 34 million? What you're really doing is saying that we're giving a blanket authority to spend up to that $34 million, and whatever level it comes in at, we're going to get the percentage that the MSBA has agreed to on all eligible costs, and that number can, can move in any direction. Now, if the final cost were to come in, obviously, higher than the $34 million, from our perspective as a town, we can't move anyways, because we wouldn't have the funding authority from the town to do it. If it were to come in lower, we obviously can do it, but then again, as I said, the MSBA's portion will drop as well as our portion. They kind of move in tandem. So that's what this whole thing kind of outlines. It outlines, as you can see, it's 10 pages, but basically, what it's doing is it's outlining what our responsibilities are and what theirs are, the fact that they're giving us the 56.1% on the eligible cost, the fact that they're, you know, at the two numbers, the 14 and 15 million dollars, and that, you know, we're going to go forward with the school building committee actually representing the school committee to push this project forward. So it's their, like I said, it's their next, it's their, was their last phase of the first, their last step in the first phase that pushes us into the second phase. And this is kind of like the town approving the 34 million, now this is you approving the, the MSBA's grant portion as well. So on this one, really what I need is just the, the approval by the school building committee, by the school committee as, you know, authorizing the town to enter into this, you know, project scope and budget agreement.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you very much. We are now on to other matters.
So we've all, we've all heard that the Foxborough varsity football is going to be playing at Fenway this year, which is really exciting. It's going to be 7:30 on Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Which is the 20th.
Thank you. And.
I just happened to know.
That's good to know. Social traditions will be changed a lot, you know, changed around, but.
Just for one year.
Exactly. There's a lot of little fuss on social media about it, so I just wanted to bring, but it's about, it's about, it's about the football players, and it's a chance in lifetime for them.
Absolutely.
And they're going to have, they're hoping to have a fan bus. It's going to be $20 to get in.
For students.
For students?
I don't know, is it?
Oh, I thought it was for everybody.
$20 tickets usually.
I thought it was just to get in.
No, well, I don't know if the fan buses are for students.
No, not the fan bus. No, not the fan bus. I think the $20 was to get into Fenway.
Oh, yeah, right.
That's what I was talking about. I don't know about the fan bus yet. They're arranging that.
$20 is the admission.
Correct, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, the fan bus, I don't.
No, the fan bus, I have no idea.
That I think is going to be organized by Diana and.
Right, so we're going to wait to see what, what happens with the fan bus, so keep your eyes open for that. It's a really, it's a real fun opportunity for these students to play against Mansfield. I'm hoping to get there.
And the band.
I was going to say, it's the band and the cheerleaders.
Marching and playing on the field. Very exciting for them and the cheerleaders as well.
Yeah, so that's exciting news.
That is our second night of conferences at the high school, so we're doing some rearranging.
Absolutely. I wondered if you were going to do that. I think a wonderful idea.
Yes, that's, yeah, because it's right before Thanksgiving, right?
I'm sure we can do some rearranging.
We can finagle.
Diana's working on it.
I'm sure she is.
Can't miss this opportunity. And that's all I have to share.
It's very exciting. Tina?
I have a couple of things. So our, our legacy brick project fundraiser, the ordering window has closed for now, anyway. I would anticipate putting in another order at the end of this school year, if there is excitement and interest, but we sold over 160 bricks and brought in over $22,000 to make our beautiful patio entrance. Why, Bill and I are referring to it as the plaza now, so we'll see, we'll see. But I, I think it's going to be pretty special, and we've had quite a, quite a lot of interest in it, so I'm excited about that. Bevy and I were at the luncheon for the swing for music.
Golf.
Golf tournament today.
I'm not a golfer, but I went by lots of.
I don't know if anyone saw, Paul Eben did a wonderful segment on the music program last Friday on WBZ, Channel 4. She did a great segment on the exciting trip to Australia, and then the fundraising has kicked off with the golf tournament and luncheon today. So wish them good luck, and they've started their process. It's very exciting. So those were my, my couple of things. Awesome.
I'm next. Sure. We had a fantastic day of professional development, right before the long weekend, which was really great, and we had a lot of good feedback from teachers. And for, coming up for parents and students, for in our K-4 category, we have Family Science Night coming up at the York Middle School on Tuesday, the 25th. I believe it's in the cafeteria. And we've also encouraged our teachers to attend, and if they have kids who are in that age range, to also come along. We have an outside mad scientist kind of guy who is coming. He was very well received last time he came, and does a lot of really interesting things. There's also a music event going on that night, but I'll save that one for you.
What?
Okay.
Oh, sacred stuff going on. Mr. Pearson?
I have nothing to add tonight, and I'm sorry I was late.
Nope, I'm good.
No, and I, I was just, I don't know what music thing you were thinking, but I'm very excited about a concert coming up next Thursday, a week from Thursday. And I heard the comment, "Tonight, we need a bigger stage." There were over 100 students. Two choirs, one from Attleboro, one from Foxborough, plus the musicians. So is that your music?
Yes, you know what? I said Tuesday, and it's Thursday for the science night. It's actually the same night, so the Voice and Strings is the same night as the Family Science.
The Voice and String, I mean, did any, did any of you get here earlier? I almost sat there and let my vice chair take over the meeting tonight.
So where is the concert going to be? Here?
Here, on the Foxborough High School.
It's here in the auditorium at 7 o'clock. It's the North Attleboro Choir that's with our choir and orchestra.
Very nice.
So as Kami Tidoldi said, everyone wants our orchestra. And they did sound fabulous.
They, I really.
It was pretty walking in tonight.
I know.
So next Thursday at 7:00 PM.
And the science is at 6:00, so people could go to the science for a while and then come over to the concert if they wanted to.
The only other thing that I wanted to say was, thank you to both of you for all of the work that you've done on the legacy brick project, to hear that $22,000 has been raised in the number of bricks.
That's exciting.
And you were worrying if you would get to 100.